Monday, March 25th. I call the meeting of the Grafton School District Board of Education in order. Ask everyone to bring their pride and flag their allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So we're at that point for public comment. Anybody wishing to make comments tonight? Yes, or please your name and...
Dan Nash, 1620 North Pine Street, Grafton.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna practice my high school forensic skills. First of all, I come in peace, okay? I know that doesn't happen very much at this mic. Last week, I wrote Jeff a letter explaining the amount of pride that I have in the Grafton Music Program. We had a phenomenal weekend, two weekends ago, at State Solo Ensemble, and I got to see three amazing boys. Three amazing boys that I've known since this big. And they have grown out to be this big. And they did something that, as a parent, I guess we could be biased, but at that moment in that room, something happened. And it moved not only me inside, it moved every single person inside. And we, I believe, have to thank Jeff, you guys, the district, and everything that you have done for our arts program. Between Scott, Steve Dearing, and all your elementary school teachers, we have Ms. A, who teaches kids love music. We have Mr. R2, who's just an icon, but he goes ahead and teaches them how to respect it. And then we have Ms. Maggie Condon, who, which, I never thought I would actually say this, I have a son that has floated through life. I don't know how many of you know him, it's just kinda one of these things, I'm like, do whatever I wanna do, Dad, and it's gonna be, I don't know. He came up to me last year about halfway through, and he said, "You know what, Dad? You know what I wanna be? I wanna be an elementary school teacher that teaches music." Now, I'm sorry, the first part of me just dropped. But to be able to give that kid a path, and to be able to give him that dream and that hope, you always ask your kids, you might wanna do that, you might wanna pick a different career, you might not wanna be a rock star, but you have to give him that hope of why not? Why not me? And with the support of you guys, and what you have done, and built this program to where it is, I cannot thank you enough. And what Maggie Condon did for us this weekend, taking Craftonics III, I know it sounds like third place, guys, but this is what I'm gonna tell you right now, who does not follow the acapella world, okay? We're in the top 21 in the country right now out of 500 groups. That says something. That has turned around in a year and a half, and it's given these kids a place. And the last thing I'm gonna say, and please do not read into this, it's only a story. I met with the business manager at Oak Creek School District about three weeks ago, we're trying to sell some stuff, okay? And he mentioned that they're gonna go to referendum to build a $60 million performing arts center. Whoa! I know I can't ask for that, that's not what I'm saying, okay? But the reason why that's happening is there was a young person there who was going around from home to home and didn't have a place to go. And the only thing that kid has was the arts. And that changed that board's mind. That is amazing, what a human can do, and what you guys do for our district and do for our kids. So I'm saying thank you from the bottom of my heart. I'm sorry I gotta leave right now, but I got a kid that was just in cabaret, and I gotta go ahead and feed him. But I needed to tell Jeff this, I appreciate everything that you have done, and everything you guys have done. So many times, people get to this mic, and you just want us to go away, but this is why I'm not here. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. And hungry boys will do that.
And it is listed on the agenda, the State Solo Ensemble.
Certainly, his sentiment is well-received and well-deserving of those folks in our arts, and of many others that are sitting in this room that, you know, day in and day out, manage and direct and lead our kids to higher things. And that is truly remarkable, and he couldn't have said it better. It really is remarkable, and we appreciate his sentiments and the time that he took to share them. Anything else from anyone?
I'm Amanda Brennan. I'm a member of the GEF, and I just wanted to give an update on what we have going on. So the first thing is the Super Bowl, so right now, we're looking at, it might be involving to a new event in the fall of 2020. Discussions are being made on what we exactly wanna do, so it looks like it will be changing a little bit than what's normal. And then, lastly, it's our GEF grants applications. Will we do April 5th for all the teachers to submit, and then we'll be going forth with picking those winners of those grants. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Amanda, for the update from the GEF and for your work as well.
You're welcome.
Any others? If not, then we'll move on to the consent agenda, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from February 25th and the statement of receipts and expenditures for February 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes as well as the receipts and expenditures for February 2nd.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye. Opposed? And it passes, so we'll turn it over to Jeff, the superintendent before.
So a number of my things are all relative to the high school, and the high school has their presentation tonight, so I've asked Scott to read some of the names for some of these students, but the first thing I wanna bring your attention to is our autos program that continues to succeed. So congratulations to GHS seniors Matthew Klein and Cody Williams, as well as Mr. Hader for their first-place finish at the Adam Technicians of Tomorrow competition. So it's the seventh consecutive state championship for our team. They will be going on to New York on April 23rd and 24th. So they are practicing on weekends, so not only in their class, but also on weekends. Newman Chevrolet, we pulled a Chevy Malibu, I believe, and so Newman Chevrolet is working with us to open up their shop and have them practice on that top-of-the-line car to be able to, they do a troubleshooting where the car won't start, and you have to be able to figure it out. So a lot of things that go with that, so community stepping forward and helping us, but congratulations to Mr. Hader again, and our students, and then our winter sports season has ended, so we thought it'd be great to give a sort of season-ending piece, and then go into how our music students did, and Mr. Nash stole a little of the thunder.
That's okay.
But I know Mr. Manti has a slide on the Graftonics in his presentation.
Yeah, so lots of recognition for, deserving recognition for Grafton High School students tonight, whether it's now or within my presentation a little later, but we'll start here with the winter sports wrap-up competition. Cheer Team had another successful season, their second consecutive second-place finish at the WACPC state-level competition, so kudos to them, and that consists of Claire Agnew, Cassidy Burke, Taylor Gerke, Madison Graebo, Amber Keenan, Cameron Klaus, Morgan Crowsey, Olivia Rutledge, Madison Sacco, Kendall Schmalls, Sidney Skolman, Sidney Tier, Cecilia Vanuk, and Mia Weeks. So congratulations to all of our competition cheer, our entire competition cheer squad. Moving on to gymnastics, Paige Arnold had a very successful individual season as a gymnast, and she placed ninth in the floor exercise at the state-level competition, so very impressive season for Paige. Girls' basketball, Hannah Bellinger, first-team all-conference, and Lexi Hilgarth, third-team all-conference. Certainly, you know all about Hannah's accolades as far as being our leading scorer in the history of both girls' and boys' basketball at Grafton High School. Boys' basketball also received some deserving recognition. Alex Hugh Brooks, first-team all-conference, JP Benchwell, third-team all-conference, and Bryson Clay, honorable mention as well. So those are all the boys' basketball athletes earning that recognition. Wrestling, Ellis Flager, conference champion, Alec Davis, second place in conference, both of them moved on to a state tournament as well. In swimming, Nick Starr, conference champion, 200 IM, second-place conference finish, 400 freestyle. And the 200 medley relay team of Gavin Depius, Nick Starr, Trevor Bodart, and Michael O'Connor, who had a third-place overall conference finish. So hopefully by that, you can see that we had a pretty successful winter season with our athletes. And then, moving on to the GHS musicians who qualified for the state, for state in the solo and ensemble competition. We're gonna start with individuals and small groups in vocal music. Anna Elbers, Lily Bauer, Haley Balt, Hunter Balt, Josh Brown, McKenna Cron, Dominic Danner, Haley Douglas, Eli Voitz, Ashley Fryjoff, Grace Gerke, Elise Luuk, Neela Litke, Sadie Monreal, Cannon Nash, Morgan Ruska, Michael Seibald, Caitlin Shanks, Cassie Sore, Zach Taylor, and Nick Wilson. Congrats to all of those individuals. And then our large group recognition in vocal music was to Graftonics, Trouble Magical and the GHS Fellas Men's Ensemble. And then, last but certainly not least, moving on to instrumental music, Hunter Balt, Kyle Baumann, Dominic Boone, Jake Brennan, Josh Brown, Greg Dempsey, James Dempsey, Gavin Depius, Alyssa Fector, Victor Geiser, Julian Hurlinger, Cameron Hughes, Dylan Knott, Ben Taylor, Annika Korb, Kayleen Kozakowski, Dana Lemke, Sierra Loughlin, Philip Mosin, Savannah O'Neil, Jackie Poyar, Michael Rose, Kate Rosenberger, Michael Seibald, Taylor Strange, Ben Turner, Josh Turner, Elise Wall, Anna Wheeler, and Sidney Wojcik. So just to kinda wrap up as far as the number of students that qualified for the vocal and instrumental music, the State Solo Ensemble, very impressive, and we appreciate the work of our athletes, we appreciate the work of our musicians, appreciate the work of our automotive students, and certainly all of the others that have competed as well that weren't named tonight. So thank you so much for your time for that, so appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Manti, and then you can sit there for a second. We have, and then we have the Virtual Learning Day that occurred on Friday, March 15th, and so we wanted to give the board an update and the community an update on that, so I'd asked both Rick and Scott to just talk briefly about that. Rick, Scott, Jennifer Griffith, and Diana had worked crafting a plan that then they shared with department chairs, which then went to teachers, so there's a ton, the faculty means there's a lot of time and effort by our staff using Canvas, and really, I think some people were very comfortable and some people uncomfortable, but everyone came together for that day as we tried to make up instructional time. So this was in lieu of having a day of school extending into the summer, extending minutes, some of those pieces that we talked about as options, and an opportunity for us to try something as we move into a one-to-one environment, could we do something like this in the future? So I've asked Rick and Scott to talk briefly.
Here, if you can refer to the second slide, Paige, there has the numbers, give you some ideas in terms of what we're working with here. Some of the questions in pulling us off were, are there enough students that need devices to have at home? Are students gonna have access, those types of things? And so Jennifer Griffith and Scott, Diana, and we came up with a plan, and some of these numbers explain what happened. We did have on Thursday, the day before, 37 Chromebooks checked out, 37 Chromebooks returned following week, so some students did need devices. There were 17 students who showed up during that day to take advantage of the facilities here. In fact, one interesting thing is we had a group of students that wanted to work on a group project, they checked out the collaboration room, and they worked in there. We had 45,000 page hits on Canvas alone on the day of the Eyes of March, on March 15th. We continue to have a lot of traffic on Saturday, on the 16th and 17th. Jennifer put together a survey, kinda gathering students' access, availability of devices, those types of things, and their opinions about this, too, and we got 372 responses. Here, if I could advance into the next slide. This just shows our page hits. We had full-year courses, had 32,000, second semester had 12,000, you added together. So on a normal day, we'll have somewhere around maybe 5,000 to 7,000 page hits, so it was quite a lot of traffic on that day. In terms of attendance, the week before was a lot of the flu running around the school, and if you add a look at March 8th, we had 391 absent periods. That's not students, that's a student absent, potentially seven periods a day. When we took attendance of people logging into Canvas, it came out to 244 absent periods, so it was not a loss for absences from that. Scott, is there anything you wanna share?
Yeah, just, I mean, of those, so the attendance information was great, Rick was able to successfully pull that from Canvas, that was a huge help for us, that gave us an idea in terms of where we were at, and then a relative comparison to that, so I felt really good about that information. The only survey piece I wanted to share is, we asked students, you know, would you rather have a virtual learning day in the future versus extending the school year into June? And we had about 35 to 40 percent that said yes, we'd rather have another virtual learning day. About that same percentage that said we would not, and then we had, you know, about 10 to 20 percent that were really undecided or neutral on it, you know? So that just gives you an idea in terms of the first time that we went through it. I think the planning of it was outstanding, I appreciate the work of the entire group, putting the effort in, and I certainly appreciate the work of our teachers to really accelerate their preparation in Canvas, to be able to prepare to deliver, to prepare to deliver a lesson in an online format like that. So I certainly gauge that day as a success, and I think that we'd be prepared to do that in the future if necessary.
So we wanted to update the board on that. I would echo Scott when he says with the teachers really trying to put forth a high-quality product for students that was still a day of learning for them, and doing some creative things across the board, and appreciate them taking on that challenge as we looked at using Canvas more effectively. Questions about that? I just wanted everyone to be on the same page of what we did and how it went.
Any questions? So I'd just say on behalf of the board, congratulations to our auto students, to our athletes, and especially those that were recognized tonight, and to the music, and other students recognized, and also, you know, equally important to those that support them, whether they're coaching, teaching, and inspiring, it's much appreciated, and their accolades and their advancement and success shines. It's amazing each time we get to this section of the agenda to see what our kids are doing. It's great.
Thank you.
All right, then we'll move on to committee reports. The Curriculum Committee, Karen from March 11.
Yes, we met, and we went over Canvas. It was a good preview of the Virtual Learning Day. All the high school teachers were able to show, some came and demonstrated the great things they're doing on Canvas, and then everyone had to have a lesson prepared for that virtual day, so it was a preview to what everyone was gonna be doing on virtual day. We also went over the elementary word study, which is the new curriculum, which is on item D on tonight's curriculum, and the Curriculum Committee is recommending approval of the new curriculum.
Okay, good, thank you. Mark, Finance Committee also met on the 11th.
Yes, Finance Committee met on March 11th with three agenda items, one being the 2019-2020 school fees, which is on the agenda for this evening, so that is coming to the full board for recommendation. We also looked at the Food Service Management Company, RFP, more or less a timeline, and that requirement from DPI on that and how that goes forward, so we looked at that. And then the last item was personnel updates, we kinda got a preview of preliminary numbers, and again, that's coming again tonight with more concrete numbers as of now.
Yes. Any questions for Mark? Steve, Policy Committee.
Yes, the Policy Committee also met on March 11th. We worked through one agenda item just due to some resources that were available. We did a first reading of the students, 5111 through 5464. Our next meeting is going to be Monday, April 1st, and we're gonna do it at 4 o'clock, a little bit earlier, and we will have five agenda items. We will have a Niola update on 28.1. We will do a second reading of the Program Series 2000, that was, both of those were tabled from our March 11th. And then we will have a second reading of our Series 5000 students, and then we will go right into a first reading of the second half of the 5,000 students, as well as a first reading of the 7,000 Series property. So it'll be a...
A great meeting.
A great meeting.
I will not be sick this time around.
A lot of information to go through, and it's the finish line, so we have, we will have that meeting, we'll have one more, which we will do a first reading of in May, with the hope of bringing at the second May meeting, the first reading to the full board.
More fun you cannot have. Any questions for Steve, Policy Committee? Good, thank you. All right, then we'll turn our attention to the Grafton High School presentation.
And Mr. Manti is here, as well as some teachers and students, so we're excited to hear what they're gonna talk about tonight.
So first of all, I'd like to thank all of our teachers in the back, and our students as well, for joining us this evening. We are going to focus on three different areas in our update to the board about Grafton High School. We're gonna focus on the work of our Building Level Teaching and Learning Council, and how that's been connected to our building goals. We are going to focus on our schedule change, and give you an update on where we are with that process after getting the support of the board in November. And then we're also going to introduce to you our SMART team, which are students that are in our Biomedical Innovations course, it's our fourth-year course in our Biomedical Engineering Project Lead the Way course, our program. So those are the areas that we're gonna focus on this evening. So to set the stage for all of this, and, you know, we have shared these goals with you many times, and as far as the high school is concerned, we track many things, but there are two goals that we track regularly, and that's, one is our ACT achievement, and I've been very transparent with the board in terms of our goal is each and every year to increase our overall composite ACT score, both in the junior year assessment and also in our graduating class data. So our juniors, we should be getting back our scores for our junior class relatively soon, and when we do, and when we're able to share that information, we will be sharing that with the board. And then our graduating class data, we have numerous students who are retaking the ACT as seniors this year, and that will impact last year, so the class of 2019 junior score that will impact that as far as their graduating class data is concerned. Our other goal is our post-secondary credit completion goal, and same thing, we're looking to increase our percentage of students who take post-secondary coursework while they are within Grafton High School, and I have a slide a little bit later that will expand on what that looks like. So where our Teaching and Learning Council members come into play tonight, and I invited Alyssa Bloom, who is a teacher in our Science Department, and Wendy Springer, a teacher in our Communication Arts Department, where they come into play here is, I'm gonna ask them to kind of talk through some of the highlights of our 200-day plan, and this really fits into the area of our overall achievement data. So the work that they're gonna talk about is a lot of our instructional work that is occurring, and it's a lot of the work that they're leading as us as a TLC, and you can kinda see how this plays into the first goal I'm talking about, which is the overall ACT achievement. So our 200-day plan, so Mrs. Springer, Mrs. Bloom, would you come on up? So our 200-day plan, and I'm just gonna focus on that top part of it, you've seen this before, focuses on rigor, and we believe by increasing the rigor in all of our classes for all of our students, in turn, will help us increase our overall academic achievement when measured by our ACT performance, okay? So that's where the whole focus of rigor comes into play, that's been consistent for us over the last couple of years, but what hasn't been consistent are strategies. We alter our strategies on an annual basis, sometimes even during the year, so that we can meet the needs of what our building is looking to do. So at this point, I will turn it over to Alyssa and Wendy, who will walk through some of those strategies, and then they'll walk through some specific examples of the work that we've been doing as a staff.
Okay, so the first strategy that you'll see really focuses on the professional development and our ability to tailor that professional development to the needs of our students in an extended block. That's been a focus of our year so far, as we're really reflective of that need within our building.
The second is teachers working together to collaborate and to bring consistent instruction and assessment practices with academic rigor to our courses.
Okay, the third one discusses the collaborative practices for our PLC data use routine, and that'll be our focus for tonight.
And finally, Canvas use and other technology to integrate tasks at higher levels of learning and higher levels in the SAMR framework, again, building rigor and engagement.
So the first strategy is a great example of what we've changed as a result of implementation of a new schedule. So that's something that, once that was approved, and once we met to discuss our first 100 days of the school year, we went ahead and added that as like a top strategy that really needed to be an area of focus moving forward. And our last strategy that Mrs. Springer has indicated, really a great example of that in action, is our Virtual Learning Day, you know, just recently that we talked about. So the fact that we're able to utilize Canvas to help us build that rigor with our students is something that we're looking forward to as we improve in that area as well.
All right, so we wanted to talk a little bit about common formative assessments and what we do as a TLC team for our colleagues at Grafton. Every quarter, so every nine weeks, we look at a common formative assessment and how it was used in the classroom, and we provide feedback to the teachers. So we wanted to note some areas of growth for us that we noticed this year. Firstly, we've noticed a strong connection between the learning targets and the actual assessment, so they are matching, students are well-aware of what they are being assessed about, and those learning targets are posted on the assessment. We're noticing that more and more assessments are starting to be organized by learning target, and we have focused on and are seeing growth in learning targets being accessible to the students, and the language that's used, the students can explain, they can understand with the long-term goal of self-assessment and independent learning for the student. And every quarter then, our teachers will complete a common formative assessment checklist and reflection document that they submit to us, and then we're able to give them feedback.
So our goal with this has to, basically, to get better throughout the entire school year. So our TLC team does a wonderful job of sitting down at the end of each quarter and reviewing all of the common formative assessments that are turned in. So our TLC gets a lens on every single one of them that are turned in, and then we provide feedback on every single common formative assessment, written feedback, and then we're able to get those back to our teachers and be a support for them in terms of improving what we're doing. So while some of this, when you see a strong connection between learning target and actual assessment, while some of that makes sense, you're like, yeah, that makes sense, that should happen on every assessment. We certainly agree, but when we started down this process, sometimes you'd see an assessment that doesn't necessarily match the intended learning target. So even something as simple as finding that match, so it really dials in with the learning target, was very important. So when you see those areas for growth, it's the result of a lot of hard work in getting us where, you know, where we need to be, so I wanted to point that out as well. And then you'll transition to actually see what some of this work looks like.
Okay, so this is a sample of a CFA that was actually turned in to us this last quarter. So we've taken snippets of it to be a little bit more focused. So what you will notice is that there's learning targets up at the top, and that was actually directly on the assessment. There was greater information about the tasks that the students were asked to complete as well, but then what you actually would find on the assessment as well is the proficiency scale. So the team of teachers or teacher, whatever's appropriate, in Course Alike, started with defining proficiency, and then they took it down to developing and beginning and said, what does it look like when a student's not quite there? What's characteristic of students that are almost there but haven't quite got there yet? Additionally, this team of teachers or teacher took it to the exceeding level. What does it look like when a student's really has it and can go above and beyond? Because that's the definition of exceeding, okay? So then the assessment was given to the students, and then there's the feedback form, these are pieces off of the feedback form. And you can see that the teacher reflected on additional things like misconceptions that the students had, and instructional strategies that really worked. What did I do that really worked? So taking it, reflecting on our practices right away, making plans going forward, and not moving past that assessment, but using it to reteach, okay? I actually specifically, or this teacher specifically, has identified students in each of the grade bands. What is that teacher going to do specifically for the students who need reteaching? Not just, I'm gonna meet with them, but very specific strategies in the intervention, and then additionally, if they really got it, where do I go from there? So down to the granular level, being able to respond to student needs, use the data, turn it over, and make it real in the classroom right away.
So this also results from, you know, a lot of hard work, and really a shift in thinking when you talk about proficiency versus obtaining a certain grade, that's a big difference. So as far as being able to look at a document of, you know, basically a standard that's very important, for in this case, our students taking Spanish, and being able to let them know on an assessment, here's where you stand, and this is what it means when you're here, okay? Instead of getting a grade back with a C on it and saying, fine, I got a C, but what does that mean? This lets students know this is exactly where they stand, and... This lets students know this is exactly where they stand, and in order to get to a spot of being proficient, there is what they need to be able to do. So a lot of difference. We're making good headway. There still needs to be more understanding that we gain with that, and over time, as we continue to give feedback, that will certainly continue to happen. So on the right side, it's great to see not only our reteaching and intervention, but then also how are we going to extend for some of those students that are already there? They already have it. Anything else to add on that?
We talked, one of the things we wanted to share was with the practice schedule, with the mock schedule last week, some of my sophomores offered some unsolicited feedback, and it was really great. This action steps to reteach, and when we use a proficiency scale to inform our instruction, we can offer reteaching to those students that are struggling. And a number of my sophomores commented on the fact that because we had three BHD periods last week, and that it was in the morning, that they felt already last week that that ability to get extra instruction in areas where they were weak was greater used or greater utilized. And so we just wanted to make sure to share that as we look forward to next year and we look forward to RTI and helping struggling students. It's already spoken very well for us.
Thanks for bringing that up. That's a great point, and a great kind of, you know, just story of one of those areas and how it ties to next year's schedule.
So we've realized that it's the best method for students if we're very clear about what the learning target is. We've defined the proficiency. We've modeled the expectations. So what we as a TLC are doing moving forward is actually doing that same strategy for teachers. So we are going to be writing proficiency scales, we're working on them, it's our in-progress thing, proficiency scales for what does it mean to have transparent and tangible learning targets? So it takes the learning target work that you've seen us doing on assessments, and for the teachers to students, and it transitions it to being from the building leadership to the teachers as we look at learning targets in the classrooms overall. So we're very proud of that extension and being clear and consistent, because we know that's what's going to benefit our student learners.
Very excited about that. You're seeing an increase in our use of learning targets on our assessments, obviously, because we require it. We want to get more of that learning target language in the classroom and actually sharing that, what proficiency looks like with our teachers, like our teachers do with students, really I think will help them in terms of what those expectations are. So, and that's the result of, you know, our TLC group. This group, Brian Durst, Shannon Meesner, and Elizabeth Minty really are the ones that brought that forward in terms of, hey Scott, like, we should really be looking to do this. So that's the value of having that team with us. So thank you very much. Really appreciate that, and we will move on. As I indicated, I just wanted to give you a brief update on post-secondary goal. You've heard me talk about this before. About 87% have completed a post-secondary course last year's graduating class. What I really want you to see is what are we doing to continue with this? You've approved new courses in college personal finance, which is UW Oshkosh course that our students will take. Initial signup numbers for that were great, so we're really proud of that. And then advanced food and restaurant management, where they'll earn a certification, and also Mrs. Stilo's working with M A T C to create an alignment there with that course. We're also revisiting partnerships with M A T C as they're opening up a little bit more flexibility with how we articulate with them. We're starting in the area of technical education. Mr. Dodge is looking at welding and what that looks like, and Mr. Gain is looking at construction. So those are areas, when you look at that post-secondary goal, those are the areas that we're working on right now. Okay. So shifting to phase two of our presentation, I want to talk a little bit about our schedule change. And I have Tracy Brogman here, who you've seen before as far as presenting to the board about the schedule change. Tracy, thanks so much for joining us this evening as well. So I'm just going to give a quick refresher on this. November 2017, we started this process. We're now in 2019, so we're just about 18 months in to this process. We based our scheduling committee on three driving factors, adding an eighth option for students, intervention and enrichment time, and overall student mental health. We conducted a very comprehensive process of involvement of a lot of stakeholders, and ultimately, we came to the school board in November of 2018 to obtain the support of the board to be able to move this forward. Upon receiving that support, which we greatly appreciate, we began planning for implementation in the 2019-2020 school year. So Tracy's here tonight, and she's going to talk to you about what we have done since that time. And Tracy, here you go.
So I'm back. I feel like I'm here every month now. I need to like figure out something else to do on Monday. My kids are so busy. So I want to take you through four different events that we've taken, like we've all participated in, and tell you what we've been doing since I was last here. So can you go to the next slide, actually?
Yeah.
February 18th was our faculty meeting, our all-staff faculty meeting. And prior to the meeting, each department had gotten together and went through things they felt really good about with our current schedule, and things that they knew department-wide that they were going to need to shift, or they needed to work on, or they needed more exposure to. So these bottom two pictures are every department that created a poster and presented it. So here is the COM Arts one that Brian and Wendy Springer are presenting. And so we just did a Venn diagram for ours, like, what are we currently feeling good about? What do we know we need to shift in the block? And then what's, like, what are we doing, obviously, that's going to work for both? So within the block, we know that we want to have some more word study work, we want to have a little bit more grammar instruction, and we know that it's going to hopefully give us more time to do some independent reading. So that's just one example, like, for what COM Arts came up with. And then each department did their own. Biggest concern overall at this meeting was loss of time, like teacher instruction time. But the biggest advantage was increased depth and learning that people were thinking we're going to continue to have. The second piece was February 22nd, our professional development day, and we had Tony Frontier come in. Tony Frontier is an administrator, author, and speaker who actually is from the area, and his focus was talking about maximizing engagement. So in the morning, we sat down with Tony Whole Group, and this is the picture from that. And two of his biggest highlights, I'd say, were talking about moving past the idea of passive engagement, which students can be really, really good at. Like, it looks like I'm paying attention to you, but am I truly engaged with that content? And moving on to how we can really make sure that kids are working with their content, and a block schedule really can allow us to have that opportunity. And then much like what Wendy and Alyssa were saying, having students become their own best assessors. So taking a lot of what we're working on in the 100-day plan with proficiency scales and clear learning targets, and using all of that more effectively within a block period as well. In the afternoon, Tony came around and met with each core area and had, we just had like specific time to talk with Tony about whatever we felt was really important to us dealing with the block. And for COM Arts, since we're not, COM Arts just really lends itself to a block anyway, we talked to Tony about making our learning targets more cohesive to our rubrics. And that was a really great opportunity for us to like just continue moving forward. Our third day was the March 15 virtual learning PD. This was such a nice, wonderful, like, calm, breath of fresh air, uninterrupted time to plan for, like, this huge, very exciting event that happened March 18th to the 22nd, the actual mock schedule of the whole block. So last week, we spent our whole week doing, on Monday, our periods one through eight, and then our Tuesday, Thursday block and Wednesday, Friday block. So this was such an undertaking. So many emails were sent to kids to make sure that they were aware. The bell said to be changed. An administrator met the kids at the door every day, like, saying it's A date, it's B date, like, making sure kids know exactly what. And besides that, I'm just going to kind of take you through like some different things that happened during the week in my little world. People said, when you move to a block, it's going to be like you're a brand-new teacher. It's going to be like you're a first-year teacher. And I thought, that sounds miserable. Like, that sounds, to be back in that spot, sounds miserable. And it's not, it's not exactly like that, because if you have a whole bag of tricks and lessons and units, it's just about restructuring all that. And that really helped me see what it will be like next year. So I was really, really happy. So it's day one, my first hour American Lit kids are in the block, and I've set this up because I had March 15th to plan everything. And I've got three big chunks of things we're going to do, like half hour, 25 minutes, 20 minutes. And I'm about halfway through the first block, and I'm looking around and I'm thinking, it's not going to work. Like, these chunks are not going to work. I had overplanned, which is good, but I had to like go back to the drawing board, like, on the spot, and figure out a new plan for my kids. And it's about, also maybe learn, like, it's about knowing my kids. My kids were, tend to not be the most academically focused first-hour students, but they got settled, and they sat down, and they were able to exhibit a little bit more academic behavior than I typically see. So I let that ride out, right? So that was like learning moment one. Learning moment two, really great opportunity for choice for kids. Saying to certain groups of kids, here are the things that we need to accomplish this week. I'm going to give you this time, you can kind of figure out what you want to do. Three, my English 9 kids in the afternoon, they need a break. They needed a five-minute break. They're just freshmen. They were so much better after five minutes, walking around in the hallway, getting a drink, checking their phones. They were ready to come back halfway through and go back into academic behavior. So that was just fantastic, fantastic. I'd say biggest takeaways, kids who were really excited for the block ended up really loved it. Like, there was no, there was no big surprise for them. Kids that were not really excited, and there definitely were a lot of kids who weren't excited, it grew on them fairly quickly. Like, a kid from my first hour who was not excited, not academically focused typically, said to me today, I kind of miss those periods. And I thought that was really, really cool, really neat. I loved planning for less periods in a day. That was awesome. And then we go to the survey data.
Yeah, of course.
That takes us right to the survey data, and this directly correlates, what did the kids say? How did their homework, how's that impacted? About 75 kids said they felt like they had less homework. And that's really great, because one of our driving factors was concern over student mental health. And then the other one was increased Black Hawk time was helpful. 80% of kids said yes.
This is the first time, we haven't shared this data with anybody, we just collected it Friday. We had 453 responses on Friday, and it was not including our seniors, so it was just our freshmen, sophomores, juniors. And we just wanted to get, this is what we could pull together in terms of for tonight. But you could see that, as Tracy indicated, about 75% either felt that there was a less, that less homework piece, or neutral on that as far as that overall student mental health factor, and then the overall of the effectiveness of Black Hawk time. So we just wanted to share those pieces as two of the three driving factors, and that's only after, you know, one week of implementing the schedule, so.
Scott, can I add something too? I asked my students about that as well, and they had one comment that really struck me. A lot of the students said they got more sleep, which I was really kind of intrigued with. And again, that goes with the student mental health. I didn't really expect that. But a lot of kids that I've been working with have been telling me they're running out three, four hours of sleep, something, a number that's insane, and they talked about getting more sleep.
There certainly are, thank you. There certainly are some unintended benefits of this. And one of them is the day. The pace of the day slowed way down. So by the fact that there were four periods in that day, by 11 o'clock this morning, our kids were in their fifth class, right? By 11:20, they were in their fifth class. So the pace of the day last week was far slower in terms of the number of transitions. I certainly feel that that's an unintended benefit, and it was not one of our driving factors, but that is certainly something that has worked for us, so. Okay. Thank you so much. That takes care of our second part. And our final part, and quite honestly, the one that I'm most excited about, because we have students here to help, is our SMART team. So at this time, I'm going to introduce Fran Grant. You know Fran well. She is the driver behind our PLTW biomedical science program, which is wildly successful at the high school. And as a result, she also has our health occupations group and our SMART team. So I'm going to turn it over completely at this time to Fran. And then I'd also just like to thank our students. We have Peyton Riddle, Emma Wagner, Olivia Konzen here to present tonight as well. So Fran?
Sure. Thanks, thank you. Before the three of them give the presentation that they gave at MSOE last week, they have just received their white coats, and this is all due to Aurora. We have a great partnership with Aurora. This is just one of the really cool things that has come out of our relationship, and that is a white coat ceremony toward the end of the year. And in order, I just wanted to share with you, it's on my phone because I just don't want to forget, but in order to get or earn one of these white coats, all of these girls have completed all four of the PLTW biomedical science classes. They received an A in all four of those PLTW classes. On the end of course exam that is given by PLTW, they did need to score, on a nine-point scale, they did need to score a seven. They need to be exemplary. So it was a seven, eight, or a nine, which is, it's hard to get a seven, eight, or nine. And some of these girls actually did get nines. They had to have an overall GPA, now this is going back to the 4.0 scale. They did have to have an overall GPA of 3.7 or higher. And many of them are also AP PLTW scholars, and that is an award given out by the college board. There's a partnership between the college board and PLTW. So that is another accomplishment that six of our girls had tonight, and so that is why they're wearing their white coats. And they were presented with those by a world-renowned thoracic surgeon that is nationally known. He is the president of their medical staff, and it's Dr.
Cool.
Thank you. My short-term memory now when it comes to names, I knew I was going to forget it, and I'm looking on this, I'm like, oh, this is not my updated presentation. So it was really an exciting afternoon for us. So what they are going to present to you is, this is one of the projects we start working on in September. And as part of the biomedical innovations capstone course, they are required to have an independent project. Well, their independent project isn't, there's a little choice, but I say we're going to do SMART team, because I think it is the, it is real, it is as close to being a researcher and in the academic world of science as you can get when you're a high school student. Because as you know, a lot of their work is either done right, or it's not done right. So we're talking about learning targets. Well, if they don't meet the learning targets or the expectations of their professors, it is given back to them with lots of comments and remarks. And so we would open up our email, and all of us, include, you know, all of us work together, which is the one thing I love about this, because I'm not an expert, I'm not a biochemist by any means. And I will just go, you have to rewrite our whole abstract, everybody, and you just get... But that is learning, and that is how it is out in the real world. And the world of academia is brutal. When you're writing, when researchers are writing their grants, and they're just told that they don't know anything. But, so, that's what I love about SMART team. Plus, they actually get to give a poster presentation, which a lot of times, students don't get that experience until they're undergrad. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Olivia, Emma, and Peyton, and I, they are going to break this down for you. Does any, do any of you have slides back around? Okay. So just explain it to them later.
That's good. I will back up more.
Sorry. Like Fran said, I'm Emma Wagner, this is Peyton Riddle, and this is Olivia Konzen, and we're three members of Grafton's SMART team. And this year, we worked with our mentor, Dr. Sophia Origanti, and she's a-
Like Fran said, I'm Emma Wagner, this is Peyton Riddle, and this is Olivia Konzen. And we're three members of Grafton's SMART team. And this year, we worked with our mentor, Dr. Sophia Origanti, and she's a researcher at Marquette. And this year, we worked with a protein called EIF6, which Dr. Origanti and her team are researching right now. It stands for eukaryotic initiation factor six. Now, EIF6 plays a really big role in cell starvation. So normally, this EIF6 is going to be in the cell, and once it moves out into the cytoplasm, it's got two options from there. If the cell is not starving, which EIF6 is not going to play a role, it's going to be released from the 60s subunit of the ribosome, which is going to allow the 40s subunit of the ribosome and the 60s to join together and complete protein synthesis. Now, just a little review, the ribosome, the ribosome helps us make proteins, which your body needs. So that's what that is for. Now, our second choice is EIF6 is not phosphorylated by GSK3. And with, which is what we're going to see down here. Now, GSK3 is another protein kinase found in the cell. And like I said, it phosphorylates EIF6 at four specific sites. So it's going to add these four phosphate molecules. And if it adds those four phosphate molecules, it's going to allow EIF6 to wedge itself between the 60s and the 40s subunit of the ribosome. So those two cannot be affiliated with each other, and they're not going to function properly, which is going to down-regulate our protein synthesis, which is what we would want for a cell that is starving, because it's already lacking growth nutrients and other growth factors that it needs to function. So by down-regulating protein synthesis, we're going to save that energy that the cell needs and hopefully prevent it from starving any further.
So when the GSK3 actually comes in and phosphorylates into the EIF6, it residues some amino acids. So here we have an amino acid sequence. And on here, we have highlighted 3-aneen 231, seranine 235, seranine 239, and seranine 243. And that is actually what residues into the EIF6. So using JML software with MSOE, we were able to actually model the EIF6 protein. So you're actually looking at a protein that is working in your body right now. And one of our four residues that we modeled was the 3-aneen, which is represented right here in the gold, if you can see that. And that is post-translationally modified by the GSK3. And then the next three residues that we modeled were the seranine, which is represented here in the lime. And that is modified during the GSK3 phosphorylation, it's not post-translationally, but during. And the C terminus right here is extra important in our molecule, because this is where the tail would actually connect to phosphorylate the EIF6. But we can't model it for one reason, it's not able to be 3D printed, but also because it isn't crystallized in the human cell yet. So if it's not crystallized, it cannot be modeled. And the thing very unique about the EIF6 protein itself is that it's actually shaped in a five-petal flower. So if you see here, we have the middle, and then we have five identical subdomains coming off from the middle. So we have the center here, and then we have our first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. So it's completely unique to the EIF6, which makes our model pretty cool compared to the rest of the others that sort of...
So in order to kind of prove that process between, that relationship between GSK3 phosphorylating EIF6, Dr. Origanti performed a series of three tissue cultures. As seen here, she took HCT116 cells, which are derived from a human cell line, and she stained them with DAPI, which is a nuclear stain. So it might be hard to see from where you're sitting, but if we look at her control, she took human cells and she stained them. So these are the cells, and the nuclei, the nuclei are stained. So you can see that, that's where EIF6 resides. So originally, in the first one, they're normal cells, that's how it's working. So you can see that EIF6 is very present in the nucleus, because it is being fed by her serum that gives it nutrients. And then she did a second tissue culture, which is starved, which is, you can see in the second row. And if you look specifically on this, under EIF6, the fluorescence is more dim, it's not as bright, which indicates that the EIF6 was then moved into the cytoplasm. So it's more spread out. So you can see that that's where it's starting to be phosphorylated by GSK3. And then finally, to prove that, she decided to take away that serum, which gave them nutrients, and then also put in a GSK3 inhibitor. So GSK3 is no longer in there. Granted, she has to keep a little bit in there, because without GSK3, the cell would die. But you can see that it's still dim in here, although it is a little bit brighter. So it proves that EIF6 is in the nucleus and localizes in the cytoplasm once it is phosphorylated. So it proves that dependence on GSK3 to phosphorylate EIF6.
So as Dr. Origanti further researches the protein EIF6, she hopes that this will eventually lead, as our title says, to the treatment of metabolic disorders. And she just continues to work in her lab, and she hopes that one day she can treat those disorders. So does anyone have any questions, perhaps, if you followed that?
I will start to say, her research is not yet published. So we could not use a lot of her, her diagrams, because it is still a paper that is in the process of being published.
I would just like to say, first of all, congratulations on your white coats tonight. That's a huge accomplishment. And I thoroughly enjoy watching the passion of all three of you in presenting this, and the use of the terminology and things that you've become so familiar with over the course of your time working in this program. So I think it's awesome that you're able to do something like this and do some actual research. That's tremendous, so.
Any questions from the board? I will say that I have three that have white coats from university. One's still working, thanks to Melissa. These are the dinner conversations we have on the weekends. They mean very little to me as we sit down. But they are vitally important. They are extremely important, the work that you do, and the knowledge that you gain. And Mr. Mantai is right, you know, the vernacular and the way you so readily and easily develop and articulate the phraseology just means the depth of the knowledge that you have relative to the subject. And that is remarkable, and you should be commended for that. Absolutely outstanding.
That was what I was going to comment, as several former students, to see the growth of them over their four years. Well, I didn't have them as freshmen, to see where they come from is such a joy to see. We teach the content, and then now they apply, get to, and that's really cool, ladies.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, so you can see back here, I'm just going to close this real quick with a couple of student accomplishments since Friday. There's been a lot going on. Graftonics, congratulations, third place in the Midwest semifinal of the varsity vocals. You've heard what a large accomplishment was that, that was by our first speaker tonight. And then our Model UN team, only in our second year of Model United Nations, they won the Peace Prize from UWM two-day conference last week, Thursday and Friday. From what I understand, and I'm getting to learn a little bit more about this, the Peace Prize is a really big deal. Is that true?
It was voted on by the staff at Model United Nations. So that's all we were told, we'll get more information when they come. But my country did.
So we apparently represented multiple countries while we were there. One country had a little bit more success, but that's okay. So thank you for that. And then I'll never, I'll pass up a plug for this, because it's a tremendous program. But nominations are now open for the 1920 Hall of Fame nominations. Dr. Sarah Rush, class of 1970, was our 1819 inductee. Nominations are now open. We need the participation of the community, of our board members, of everyone to get the word out on this, so we can keep filling that candidate pool with many, many deserving candidates, as we know are out there. We just have to discover them, find them, and fill out the applications, so we can keep recognizing our wonderful alumni. And with that being said, realizing that I've exhausted my time with this presentation, I would like to see if there are any questions.
Any questions? I've got one that goes back to schedule changes. So during the schedule changes, we talked about the biggest concern being loss of teacher-instructor time, or a sense that there would be a loss. Have there been strategies developed to address that, or discussions around whether that's real, not real?
I would say if the discussion started immediately, back to Tracy's example of what we shared at the department, at our, at our all-staff meeting in February, that came forward. Certainly, there is a realization of the fact that with adding an eighth option to our schedule, each individual class period loses a number of hours throughout the course of a semester or a school year. So the biggest piece that our staff is tackling is how do we, what do we do with that? So if we have to cover less material, what is it that we take out? If we have to cover it differently, how do we do that? Can we cover some items with more depth versus covering all items at a surface level? So those conversations are occurring by department. Tony Frontier touched on that a little bit with some of the individual department discussions. We had our social studies team go visit another area school that has transitioned to extended class periods, and they were able to ask fellow educators those questions. So, I mean, yeah, from the start, ongoing. We'll continue to work through that as we get to next year. And that work will continue through next year, to be honest. You know, the first time that we moved through it, Tracy had a great reflection just about what her first lesson was like in that. And we'll have a lot of that as we look to improve upon that moving forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Scott, I had a question on the, going back to the CFAs.
Yeah.
Alyssa said that the teacher in the sample took the, took it to the exceeds expectations then? Is that an expectation to go to that level, or is that kind of an outlier for her of that?
So I would say that that's a little bit of an outlier. Proficient means that you meet our expectation. So you've met our expectation. We feel that you are at a spot where you've successfully met that particular standard, that particular learning target. Exceeds would be, you're above and beyond that, you know? So we have exceeds within our proficiency scales. And it depends, you know, a proficiency scale can depend on how far you are into a particular unit. You know, you might only have a developing and proficient to start with, but if you're further on in the course of a unit, you certainly may have that exceeds as a part of that as well.
Because it seems obvious from that example that, especially with the students being listed there, that, you know, a game plan could be developed for those kids instead of just right when they get to, you know, needs. They might not all be the same. And so you might need that extension or enrichment.
Yep. And that's where that strategies for enrichment come into play on those assessments. Thanks. Yeah, what?
Sometimes the teachers will also define exceeding as combining multiple learning targets and being able to do those all at the same time. And sometimes we also would say exceeding is when you can teach it to somebody else. Our expectation is first, if you learn it, but then if you can explain it to somebody else, that would be an exceeding. So we don't expect everybody to be able to teach it just to get to that proficiency level.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If not, thank you so much. Truly love being the principal of Grafton High School and working with the staff members and our students every day. So thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks, well done presenter. Well done. Thank you very much for coming tonight. All right, next up is the elementary word study curriculum.
So lucky for you, I'm going to slow it way down and talk about kindergarten phonics. I think we'll be okay. Here's what the smart, very proficient science team just did, SMART team. So I'm here to talk about our curriculum adoption that we are hoping will get approved tonight by the board. Back about two weeks ago, teacher team came to the curriculum committee level. We talked at length with the board around how we came to our recommendation, the research that we looked at, the guidelines around, around what everything is saying about, about word study and about phonics, looking at gaps in our own curriculum and our data, looking at neighboring districts and what they are using. We talked through our process, we shared the resources. The board had an opportunity to extensively review those resources and ask questions of the teacher team. So tonight, I am asking for approval of K2, the units of study in phonics at the K2 level to meet the requirements of word study. And then the three, at the third through fifth grade level, Words Their Way Classroom, which has a digital component. It's Words Their Way that we currently have with a digital component as well for third through fifth grade for next school year.
So I believe everyone was at the committee meeting that night, had an opportunity to hear the research and see the materials and understand the recommendation, the direction the curriculum committee is recommending for adoption by the board. So I'd entertain a motion as such.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The teams as well, for their work bringing this together.
Great, thank you.
Next is GHS advancement, advanced placement chemistry credits.
Just read your email, Mr. Mantai, you made me laugh. I would say this about the high school presenting, you know, we started this a couple of years ago, and I know we've done it differently in years past, but it is nice to start at, start at the elementary level, see our elementary students, see our middle school students, see our high school students, and see the progression of students. And you can hear Melissa talking about that with, at the high school level. It's even, I mean, more rewarding when elementary people see these kids now as high schoolers than they're kids, but they're young adults. But it is great to see the product that the high school is producing, but because of the product that we're developing at the elementary, the middle, and the high school as they leave and are successful in this area. So it's always great to see kids. I think that's always a, hopefully it refreshes the board to be thankful for the amount of hours that you put into this job that goes on top of your day job. So like, we really do, I think it's a great way to see it, and I always enjoy seeing kids, and I appreciate all the principals doing that in that way. So, but this is a different topic, for advanced placement chemistry credits. Mr. Mantai talked to me about this just recently, or a couple of weeks ago, about bringing something forward, and Ms. Stoudt is here to talk about it as well. Yeah, absolutely. So I'll just give a brief overview, and then Melissa will take it from there. Our advanced placement chemistry course, currently a one-credit course, but, which means that students would, you know, get one credit of being in their one period a day. There's a lot of work that goes in outside of that one credit. And we really felt now with the schedule change taking place, that bringing this forward and recommending the 1.5 credits awarded for completion of the course was appropriate, especially moving into next year. And I'll cut it there, because Melissa will explain why that's important.
So 12 years ago, when AP Chemistry, when I brought AP Chemistry to Grafton, we were in a five, five, five periods a day that teachers were teaching, seven periods for students. And it was recognized that the time that you would have in college was more like seven hours during the week that you would receive. And so when we set it up, we set it up with AP Chemistry having the normal one credit, but then students were required to have a study hall. And so they would come in during their study hall and make up the time that was missed from the college setting. And they would be working on labs or problem sets, et cetera, during their study hall. However, I was not always their study hall teacher. It was not always in the same hour. So it was a challenge to do that with the study hall, but we've managed to do it, even though that proposed a challenge. With the new schedule, we will be cutting back on the amount of contact time each week you would have with your students. And with that in mind, the proposal was to make it the first semester a block E, or let me say it this way, where you would have first and second hour on Monday, and then you would meet with them on first hour during Tuesday. Wednesday, you would meet with them second hour. Thursday, first hour. Friday, second hour. Which means that you would get 85 minutes to 90 minutes every day for the first semester. And then second semester, we would only have it one period scheduled. And so that's what our recommendation is, is to switch it from a one-credit class to a 1.5. This is not out of line with other school districts in the area. Port Washington's on a modified block, and they actually have it that it's a two period, or two periods the entire year. So they actually have it as two credits. Cedarburg has it as a 1.5, the exact same recommendation that I'm making here. Hartford just switched to the block and just made the recommendation, so they're going to go through it the first time this year with the 1.5 block as well. What questions do you have for me?
Any questions?
I don't think I have a question in particular to this, but are there other classes or courses that... that down the road could require more than one credit?
Yes, AP chem, excuse me, AP chemistry already had this, this study hall in line. AP biology would be the recommendation in the future. Presently, how we've solved that problem, because they have basically the exact same issue, is that we highly recommended to students that they take other classes that had some of that AP curriculum in it. So we would have HBS class that they're taking, human body systems, environmental, some of those classes bring in ecology that is also part of the AP bio curriculum. And so our recommendation, we will come back to you next year with that recommendation.
We already have the structure in place for this one, so it's a pretty simple switch. Not having the structure in place in bio yet. We believe coming to you in November with that will probably be where we're at.
The only other 10, so AP bio, AP chemistry, you could get as many as 10 credits for those would be the calculus classes, but ironically calculus in college doesn't have a lab component, so we actually have more time at the high school. Now, it will be less than what they have presently, but they actually have more time than they would at the collegiate level for the same course. So it's not, it's the lab-based courses that this is a bigger issue. In AP physics, unless we adopted AP physics C, you would only be doing a one semester course. AP physics C is a year-long course. If we had that, then we would make that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. You need a motion to increase it?
Yes, so we, yes, we do need a motion to increase it.
If not, then I'd entertain a motion to increase the AP chemistry credits from one to 1.5 as presented. Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? It passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
2019-20 school fees.
At the March 11th Finance Committee meeting, we reviewed changes we made to fees last year, fees to parking, for parking and athletic participation. Those changes to the fees allowed us to add an additional $30,000 per year into our 20-year capital maintenance plan. The Finance Committee is bringing forth a recommendation that we leave school fees this year, or next year where they are this year. So we're recommending no changes to school fees, and those would be, the comparison chart would be on the next, next slide. And again, even after changing those fees, last year we remained below average compared to other districts in Ozaki County.
Any questions for Tolu? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the fees for 2019-20, reflecting no increase from 2018-19. So, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? It passes. Thank you. Food Service Management Company, RFP.
Just wanted to provide an update. We spoke about this at the Finance Committee as well, and I mentioned that we would be having a site visit the day of our next board meeting, and a little bit of information is on the next slide. So we did have three companies come in today to tour our facilities. I will say it was enjoyable to be able to take them around and show off our nice new spaces, which you are well aware of. It was, it was nice, felt like we could impress upon them all the positive changes that we've made. Upcoming, we would have proposals due from those who visited today on April 10. We would evaluate those proposals through April with the potential of approving a contract at the end of May at the May Board meeting, should we decide to go with the option of outsourcing versus what we currently do, which is self-operate. So I wanted to provide the board with an update of where we are right now.
So are those the only three that we're anticipating are going to submit a proposal?
Those were the three I expected to come. I wouldn't have been surprised if others came, but there wouldn't, there weren't any others that stood out where I thought, well, I expect them to be there. These three operate a number of school districts within the Milwaukee area, including Airmark, which, which operates Cedarburg and McQuanville.
And then was their visit today just here or did they go to Albany?
We visited the, we started at the high school and saw production in the morning. We headed over to John Long Middle School to check out the kitchen there. We went across the street to Woodview to check out the new Woodview kitchen spaces, and then we came back to the high school so they could observe the first lunch period at 11:20 and actually see it in operation.
So the proposals, will they be just written proposals or are they expected to come back and present?
They will be written proposals. After we get the proposals, we can bring out, bring back companies if we so choose to gain further clarity on their proposal and ask follow-up questions.
Need looking for action from the board in May?
Yes. Is there any way that these companies work across school districts? Create any kinds of scale or, you know, Airmark, et cetera, because Cedarburg?
Cedarburg and McQuanville. I, you know, I don't know if geography will play a factor. You know, that, that remains to be seen.
They're still pretty much just doing everything with average individual.
Right. I'm not aware of any sharing of people, but that could possibly create situations where if you have a shortage somewhere, you might be able to pull, but I'm not sure on the inner workings of, of their operations.
But I suspect all of the backend administration buying is all leveraged across as many potential districts that they serve as possible. I would imagine that's what makes this model a viable and popular option to get the counties of those scale.
They get it, I just wonder.
Well, they get it. Hopefully we get it. That's to be seen, you're right. We would expect to get it. Anything else? Thank you. 2019-20 personnel adjustments.
All right, each year we make adjustments to our, the FTE of our personnel based on our enrollment projections as well as course selections at John Long Middle School and the high school. Much like last year, we have areas where we're seeing a need for increased FTE and areas where we see a decreased need for FTE. The net reduction that we're seeing this year is 2.33 FTE. That includes areas that will need an increased FTE of .77 and areas that need a decreased FTE of 3.1. We also, due to enrollment, are seeing a reduction of one classroom support staff member. This along with retirements and resignations do result in expenditure budget decrease of nearly $135,000. We'll be discussing later some of the impacts to giving notices of non-renewal to particular staff. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the update, Tolu. Anything? We will go on to approval of funding the Blackhawk Scholarship.
All right, last fall, we, we discussed in Finance Committee that a board member was requesting that, that they were able to refuse their salary and then fund a scholarship with those funds. That, that board member has refused that salary, and only the board can direct those funds to a scholarship. So we are bringing forth the recommendation that the board direct the refused salary of $1,350 to the Blackhawk Scholarship, which would then be awarded by the GHS Scholarship Committee.
I think all are familiar with the requirements and the request, so I'd entertain a motion as presented by administration to direct the refused salary of $1,350 to the Blackhawk Scholarship as outlined. So, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? And it passes. Thank you. Personnel report.
And we have two resignations that we've had from staff that will take place at the end of the year. So as with, with teachers, it's always at the end of the year. But we have Chris Schultz, who's a fourth grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary School, and Jackie Budkovich, who is a third grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary School. So we appreciate their service that they've given to us. We look forward to their next steps as they move forward, but we wish them well and appreciate the work that they've done for our students. And then the resignation of Stacy Mozy, library clerk at Graphton High School, has taken effect for this year. That's information only.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to accept the resignations of Christopher Schultz, fourth grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary School, and Jackie Budkovich, third grade teacher at Kennedy Elementary School. So, second. Any discussion? Of course, we will accept those resignations and thank them for their service. All those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? And it passes. Student overnight trip request.
And we have three different overnight trips that we're bringing to the board. One by Fran Grant, who you just heard speak here, with the HOSA State Leadership Conference that will be coming up on April 14th. Goes over spring break there at that state leadership conference in Medels. And good opportunity for students to experience some leadership skills in the HOSA area. And then also we have a, two athletic pieces coming forward with a golf meet that is May 3rd, that is in the, at the Janesville Riverside Golf Course in Janesville. So they haven't had tryouts yet, so that's why the students are not listed here at this time, and hopefully by May a golf course will be open. And then this girls soccer program, Mr. Arnold, is the end of April 4/26 and 4/27 at the DePere Soccer Tournament they're at with that. And you can see that they have chaperones appropriately for all these different events.
So first, a motion to approve the overnight trip requests. Any question regarding these requests? None? All those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? And they pass. Thank you. And last, on the open agenda, here's a request.
Yes, and we have, we have two of those. We have one for, from Condon Oil Company and Graphton Mobile, Mobile Education Grant from Steve Jones for the Skills USA Support. So it's restricted gift, excuse me, going directly to our Skills USA. Mr. Jones employs our youth apprenticeships, apprentices and our graduates as automotive technicians. And then the T. Rowe Price Program for charitable giving, the Wozniak family, is also donating $500 for Skills USA Support. Donation to the Wozniak family graduated three sons from GHS, all of which were well-prepared for post-secondary education careers. One in particular is a tech ed instructor at Minnesota High School, is a GHS Skills USA and Ford AAA national competitor. So very cool to see that and see them giving back even with their kids being gone. So we would ask for acceptance of these gifts.
A motion to accept those gifts. Second. Any question regarding those gifts? Motion, all those in favor of the motion, aye? Aye opposed? It passes. Thank you to the donors there for the generous gift. They are much appreciated and we value these partnerships that we have with area business and family members. As their kid's gone to big and better things.
Yeah, we will send a thank you on behalf of the district, expressing that as well. Thank you.
All right. Then we'll look to the Board of Education to convene in closed session to, one, consider preliminary notice of non-renewal of teaching contracts. Two, consider apparent requests involving social and personal history. Three, conduct sponsorship negotiations. And four, to conduct public business in which competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 1985, 1 sub C, E, and F to have such a motion. And we'll take a voice vote. John, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. And yes. So we are moved into closed session. Thank you.